Mrs. Alonies.
Present.
Mrs. Kessler.
Here.
Mr. Ferdo.
Here.
And I'm here myself. Uh, flag salute, um. Mrs. Kessler, you wanting to lead us for the flag?
Ready? Come on in.
My pleasure to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with no limitations at all.
Thank you very much. Report, uh, of a closed sessions, when in a closed sessions, the board take action on a uh, following item, uh, all members voted anonymously on approved item A, student expulsion case F Y E twenty-five dash zero one. And, uh, we move into now into the school reports. Uh, we have a substitute for Selma High School, uh, Brandon Brum.
Yeah, Braden Brum.
Good evening. Go ahead and give us the update.
Yeah. Hello, uh, my name is Braden Brum and, uh, I'm filling in for Alyssa Salazar because she's at her volleyball game today. Um, the last few weeks of school, uh, were success. Uh, leadership prep for the tennis volleyball, water polo and football home games. That, uh, we have and we hosted them with posters, uh, balloons and, uh, decorated with good, uh, summer high spirit. Um, we hosted our club rush and we had over twenty-five clubs. Uh, many students enjoyed being able to sign up for clubs and getting more involved in the school community. Um, this week, our leadership team is prepping for the Friday Night Lights against Dinuba. Our student section theme this week is the USA, like American stuff. Um, we encourage students to participate in the dress up themes to make their football Friday more exciting. Okay. And then, uh, our athletic report. Um, Bear Nation's athletics has had a busy two weeks with volleyball competing in Singer West. Turning, uh, the Lady Bears play tonight versus Dinuba and Thursday versus Fowler. Uh, football suffered their first season loss to Porterville and host Dinuba. Oh, and hosts Dinuba this Friday at Staley Stadium. Um, water polo hosts Dinuba Thursday as they will, um, as they at from five to six P M. Uh, I don't know, uh, varsity girl. It gets a little confusing towards the end of the thing right here. Um, cross country will compete with, uh, Sierra Pacific on Friday. Uh, hope to see you at this Friday's game versus Dinuba.
Thank you so much. You did a good job.
Good job.
Yes. That's awesome updates. Um, we have E L M S, uh, Laney Perez or Casey Very. Anybody?
Good evening. My name is Lonnie Perez and this is an A L M S school report. Suicide Prevention and Awareness Week. Next week is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Week. There will be dress up days and lunchtime activities. Information will also be shared with students about available resources and tips on caring for mental health. Vaping Awareness Assembly. Next Thursday will be our school-wide assembly on vaping awarenesses. Presenter Rob Hola will entertain and educate students about making positive choices and truth about vaping, the science behind it and consequences that come with it. Eagle store. This Friday, our eagle store will open at lunch. Students can use the eagle books to make purchases of snacks, stickers and spirit items. Students will earn eagle bugs for exhibiting those A L M S store traits, which are self-control, optimism, admission, and also responsibility. Intramurals. Volleyball intramurals are starting this week during lunch in the gym. Athletics. Our first home girls volleyball and te- girls tennis games of the season are tomorrow at three thirty P M. At A L M S. We hope you can make it to cheer on our athletes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for the updates. Now we will move into the public input. Members of the public wishing to the address the Board of Education on a matter within the restrictions of a board, but not on this agenda may do so during the public comments period for up to three minutes. Public comment on a specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public record, please say your name. Do we have any public comments tonight? Hope we don't. All right. We're going to move into the discussion and the action items. Uh, Superintendent Mr. Gomes.
Okay, so to kick us off tonight, we have with us the V R O P Superintendent Fabrizio La Faro. For those who don't know, V R O P offers exciting summer internships that provide our students with valuable real world experience in a variety of fields. You'll be seeing the PowerPoint coming up here also, including automotive, E M T firefighting, healthcare and manufacturing welding. These paid internships give students the opportunity to develop their soft skills while gaining hands-on experience in their chosen areas of interest. So to share more about the success of this program and highlight the experiences for our students, I'd like to introduce Fabrizio and two of our Selma High students, Justin Juarte and Brianna Capetillo, who will speak about their own experience of a V R O P summer internships. Please welcome Fabrizio and our student speakers.
Superintendent Gomes, thank you. The business owner of the board, members of the board, members of the cabinet, good evening. This is really about the students tonight and, and again, thank you for supporting this program. We started years ago with a handful of students and then it kept growing uh, more and more and then they're, they're, they're going to share all the experiences. I want to acknowledge one of the business partners that partners with, uh, Selma Unified and Valley R O P, which is S K F and, uh, that's, uh, um, uh, Ms. Casares, Veronica Casares C E O's as S K F. And, uh, Tricia Miller as from S K F. So they're, they've been very good, great supporters and they're here to see the students do their presentation and being, uh, um, being recognized. And also want to acknowledge, um, Veronica McCallister from Valley R O P and Sarah Viegas C T Councilor here at Selma High School, who support this program with the administration here and everybody. So thank you so much.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Gomes and everybody here tonight. Um, we are so excited to share the opportunity that Selma High School students had this summer to participate in paid summer internships. Um, up on the slides, you see some pretty impressive stats. So, um, this year we were able to provide internships to twenty-nine Selma High School students, all juniors, thanks to the support from the board and from our partnering agencies, as Mr. La Faro mentioned. Um, our students completed an average of just under ninety hours of internship time this summer each. Um, for a grand total of over twenty-five hundred hours. Um, we had students participating in internships, um, at S K F and for the first time ever, we were so excited to have five students intern at their facility. Um, we also had three students at Selma Fire Department. We were able to have six students assist with the Selma High School Ag Farm, um, including as farm managers, greenhouse managers and herdsman. Um, we had students out with the I T department, transportation. They worked as teacher assistants in the summer E L P program and medical assistance as well. We had a couple of students who were able to take video and photographs of all of the other students participating in their internships. And then additionally, we were able to have five students participate in the summer jumpstart program at Ridley College. Um, so many students were interested, uh, but so we did have to have a selection process and for that I'm going to turn it over to our C T E counselor, Ms. Sarah Viegas.
Hi, we had over fifty applicants interested, um, juniors. Half of them were a teacher recommendation, half of them just see the posters and advertisement a while um, all over campus. I emailed all the parents, so parents were aware as well, so they were informing their students about it. The selection process after the fifty applicants, they all interviewed, they all interviewed with the industry partners, so it was very, um, selected, a selected few were only available to do the internships and.
So, um, I'd just like to turn your attention to the slides up on, on the screen, on the projector. Um, you can see our students in action. So, um, we had, like I mentioned, students at S K F who were able to take turns at different departments, including in the wastewater, um, department as well as H R. Um, through fire, the fire department students were able to go on several fire calls or emergency responder calls and they were able to interact as much as their training would allow. Um, and I'll continue to swipe through, but, um, as you can see, these internships were real work experience for these students. I had the opportunity to talk to them before this meeting and they shared that this was really a great experience. Um, because it did give them that opportunity to see what it would really be like to be in this industry. Some of them decided if this was the right career path for them or not, and for that I am going to let the students speak, um, to what they experienced.
Hi, my name is Brianna Capetillo and I was one of the interns at S K F where I was recommended by my construction teacher, Mr. Morales, and I had an interview with them. Um, uh, during my time there, I was working with operations where we took samples of the water. Um, it was the influent and effluent where then we would take them to the lab and we tested them to make sure that their pH levels were where they were supposed to. Um, we were with, um, maintenance and collections where we make sure that all the equipment was working properly and we would um, write on the backcon to like clean all the manholes. And yeah, I just wanted to thank, uh, Valley R O P and Selma Unified for this opportunity.
Hi, my name is Justine Wante. I was one of the few interns selected to work for the fire department over the summer. And I was recommended by my teacher, um, Chief Roberts, and I also had to go through an interview process for it as well. Um, it was a really interesting internship and I got exposed to a lot of things that I'd never seen before in real life. Um, I remember it was like my second day working at the fire station. Um, and we got a call for a patient O D. And I got to be pretty hands-on with it and I was on, I was administering oxygen while a few other of the E M Ts were doing the chest compressions. So I thought that was really interesting and it was something I'd never like done before. And along with that, there are also many other interesting experiences that exposed me to a lot of what I'm going to be seeing, um, when I actually go into the fire service. Um, so I feel that this internship has really mentally prepared me on what to expect upon entering the service. And luckily I wasn't alone either. I had many allies working at the station and then at the station near the hospital on the ambulance as well. Um, they were very supportive and mentoring and I'm very grateful for this opportunity. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we'd like to welcome any questions from the board or anybody that might have questions for the students.
That was a nice job.
Yeah, I, I'd like to thankful to, um, V R O P and always working us with the, like a joint venture programs on every summer and all year throughout. We really appreciate it, especially that you taking our students putting their hands on it. S K F Veronica manager, she's here. We really appreciate it. You guys taking our students, giving them real experience in the life. That's matter to us. And I think we should have put these students in our monthly newsletter, newspaper. And that, that way the more students will learn from them and we really appreciated you guys, what you guys do. Thank you.
Wait, I got, I got one. I got one. A- as a plumber, S K F guys. All right, here we go. Thumbs up or thumbs down? Did you enjoy it?
Oh.
Right on. That's awesome. And thank you, thank you, S K F for making that happen and Selma Fire too. I see you back.
And, uh, unfortunately Selma Fire couldn't be here, they said, as long as.
Nope.
She pulled her, she pulled her, thank you. Um, and now we do want to present the students with a certificate of participation for, um, their dedication to the internships. And I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Gomes and Mr. Lane to come up, please. All right, Elizabeth Franzen. Audrey Almandades. Anthony Estrada. Josh Binning. Joseph Chavez. Brianna Capetillo. Angel Vasquez Diaz. Anthony Delgado. Xavier Jasso. Demetrio Lopez. Mia Hurtado. Kimberly Torres. Evelyn Gutierrez Salazar. Maneli Venegas Ramirez. Justine Wante. Raul Huerta. Sebastian Lopez. Roxanne Jones. And if anybody would like to take pictures, now's the time. Thank you, everybody.
Nice picture. Yay.
Students, if you could exit to your right, please. Thank you.
Also want to thank Fabrizio and his team. Thank you guys again. Great job. Excellent.
Thank you again, and, uh, this is awesome moments that, uh, we enjoy a lot as a board members. So we're going to move into, uh, item number two, presentation, strategic plan for, for plan year review data.
Yeah, uh, strategic plan data presentation. So tonight we will present our results of the strategic plan and the strategic plan is right behind us here. You guys see it there. Um, I'll start by reminding everyone about our commitment to our Selma Unified Strategic Plan. Last year, we created this plan to guide our district positively into the future. We received feedback from all stakeholders and implemented several changes to the plan for it to be final, what you see here behind us. Today, we will present how we did on the strategic plan. We will also be publishing results for our community through our monthly newspaper in form of a report card that we'd like to do annually of how we did, so the public also knows how we performed on the strategic plan. Please be aware that we will be coming back two more times in the coming months to provide several state CASP academic results with more accurate numbers and with more specific to the CASP. So make sure that you guys know this is a kind of a three-part series we got going. Tonight, you will see the results of all of the metrics that we have in this strategic plan. You can see it at the bottom there. All those metrics will be going through there, through them today. Some of these metrics are accountability measures from the state of California, from the state of California dashboard and other metrics are ones we created locally to hold ourselves accountable on things that we find are focus areas for Selma Unified. Please be aware that we set forth metric targets that were much higher than the state average growth. Why would you do that? Well, we did this because first of all, we believe in the performance of our hardworking staff and in our plans that we have to improve our overall academics. We also definitely raised the bar on this and we believe in raising the bar. So now we need to continue to strive to meet the bar that we raised that we have set forth. So here to present tonight is Sonia Oliva. And I'll be chiming in throughout the presentation. Crowd, a crowd left. This is the, to me, this is the highlight.
Welcome, board members, uh, welcome cabinet. Everyone else is here. Thank you. Um, so my name is Sonia Oliva and I'm a teacher on special assignment, um, data analysis for our district. Let me go ahead and start the next one.
So here we have the, uh, strategic plan. Again, we're just showing a picture of it, but it lives here behind us. We have it in the boardroom and again, this is something everyone had, uh, feedback on. All stakeholders saw this here and tonight we're discussing the results of how we did on this.
Okay, so as, uh, Mr. Gomes already explained, some of the data we'll be presenting this evening are state accountability metrics. So the data is preliminary at this time. So we have this graphic up here to kind of explain, um, how it works with the numbers, um, being refined. So if you think of an input output, output machine, um, the state will take our CASP spores, they'll kind of go into this, um, you know, kind of like a, a machine and things, you know, change to the numbers, um, the numbers get refined, um, adjustments are made and then the final numbers are released on the California dashboard in December.
So, uh, the way we're going to present tonight, we're going to take each goal one at a time. If you see a yellow highlight, that means it's a state accountability metric. That means the state of California holds us accountable. If you don't see a yellow highlight, that's just our own accountability. We put it on there and we hold ourselves accountable, but no one looks at this beyond uh, us. So you'll see a yellow, uh, highlight on those. And by the way, uh, as mentioned, um, the state results are preliminary. They'll be, uh, final here in two months.
Okay, so our first metric, um, as you can see, is highlighted in yellow, so the data for this metric is preliminary. Um, for the CASP assessment, our goal was to improve by five points in E L A and math. In E L A, we increased by four point seven to five point one points. So we did improve as the green arrow indicates. Did we meet our goal? For now, it's to be determined and we'll know if we've met our goal of five points when the dashboard is released. In math, we increased by seven point six points. So we did improve as the arrow indicates and we met our goal of five points of growth as indicated by the M for met. And when you combine the growth of E L A and math, the total is the greatest growth we've had in six years in the district. I agree. Okay, for our next metric, um, for the state CASP assessment in grades three through eight and eleven, our goal was to increase proficiency by two point five percent in E L A and math. In E L A, we increased by one point seven percent. And as the arrow indicates, we did improve, but we did not meet our goal of two point five percent increase. For math, we increased one point four percent. We did improve, but we did not meet our goal of two point five percent. Our next metric is our district interim assessments. Our goal was to improve two point five percent in E L A and math. In E L A, we increased four point seven percent. So we did improve and we met our goal of two point five percent growth. In math, we increased by twelve point five percent. We did improve and we met our goal of two point five percent growth. And for our next metric, our goal was to reduce Ds and Fs in E L A and math by four percent. In E L A, we reduced it by five point one percent. So we did, um, improve and we met our goal. In math, we reduced Ds and Fs by one point nine percent. We did improve, but we did not meet our goal of four percent.
Sorry, I'm looking at the party they're having out there still. Focus, focus. Goal two, so here we have goal two. Once again, you'll see the yellow, uh, highlight on the areas that are state accountability and goal two is all students will develop the personal skills necessary to achieve academic and social goals. There's two bullets to these metrics.
Okay, so our first metric, um, the district climate and culture survey. Our goal was to improve by two percent on all three surveys, the one for students, parents and staff. The student survey, which, um, the area was, um, safety in that area, we increased by five percent. So we did improve and we met our goal. On the parent survey, the area was school climate and we did increase by three percent. So we improved and we met our goal. For the staff survey, the area with school climate, we increased by four point five percent. So we improved and we met our goal. And the next metric for goal two. I think I jumped a little too fast there. Okay, so as you see, that one's highlighted in yellow, so this is a state accountability measure. So this data is preliminary. So our goal for suspensions and expulsions is to decrease by two point five percent annually. For suspensions, we increased by twenty percent. So we did not improve and we did not meet our goal. For expulsions, we decreased expulsions by twenty-seven percent. So we did improve and we met our goal. And for goal three.
So goal three, same applies here with the yellow, uh, highlight, uh, representing the state accountability and goal three is all students will be prepared for lifelong success in their intended career paths.
All right, so first metric highlighted in yellow, so this is a state accountability metric. So the data is preliminary at this time. So our goal was to in- increase our graduation rate by half a percent. And we increased by three point six percent. So we did improve and we met our goal. And we wanted to highlight that this is the highest graduation rate in recent years. The next metric is credit deficiency. Our goal was to decrease, uh, the number of students that are credit deficient by three percent. And we decreased by one point eight percent. So we did improve, but we did not meet our goal of three percent. Our next metric is C T E participation. Our goal was to increase by two point five percent, the number of students participating. And it's not moving forward.
There it is.
Little lag there. Okay, so, um, our participation was seventeen percent, increase in seventeen percent. So we did improve and we met our goal. The next metric is L P A C proficiency. Our goal was to increase the number of students to reach proficiency on the L P A C assessment by two point five percent. And our, we decreased by five percent. So we did not improve and we did not meet our goal. The next metric is dual immersion participation. Our goal was to increase by five percent annually. And we increased by thirty-six percent. So we improved and we met our goal. And I believe this is our final measure, um, increase seal of biliteracy recipients. Our goal was to increase the number of recipients, which we did, um, increase of forty-five percent. So we improved and we met our goal.
Thank you, Sonia. And so the final, uh, next steps here is, you know, one thing we wanted to do is celebrate growth. Um, you know, when you win a lot of football games, you celebrate it. That's how you get people involved and want to be part of it and want to work harder. So we, we've been celebrating at school sites, uh, we've been celebrating at a district level, uh, We wanted to analyze the results and address the challenges. So after you celebrate, you're like, there's still work to be done. Remember, when you improve, it sometimes even makes it harder to climb that mountain. So there's more work to do to continue that improvement. There's areas that you saw, some of those areas that we have as our own metrics that we did not meet. It went up, they would, but yet we did not meet them. We have to address those. So we've already set forth and looking at what are things that we're going to do this year to ensure that those are going to improve and that we know previous to when the end of the year comes, we already know they're not going to improve so that we're doing something about it earlier on. And that, that's that prevention, right? Being preventative versus reactive is going to be very important for us. Setting growth targets and continuing to align our curriculum and assessments. We, you heard a lot about alignment last year. Aligning our assessments, aligning our curriculum, getting the right curriculum in front of folks. Making sure that every student, whether they're in one school or the other, are all focused on the right targets. That was a lot of work that we put forth last year. Work's not done there. It doesn't just happen. There's work to do this year. We have our interims for the second year. That's going to be big. When those come out, we're now going to see last year to this year, assessment results on a new assessment that we created last year that's more aligned to the state. So there's a lot of work to be done still this year, but I do want to pause and thank everyone. And it starts with every student out there who sat taking that assessment or who worked hard at not getting in trouble or who sat in their classroom focusing so that they can improve and not get Ds and Fs. Students really are the ones that are carrying it a lot on their back. And so I want to thank them. I want to thank the staffs at each school that worked so tirelessly to make this work. It's easy to have a strategic plan. Actually, that was the easy part. The hard part was listening to me and everyone else making it happen. Guys, we're going to do this, showing us every time we're in front of staff. Here's the strategic plan. Here's the metric. We're going to go after it. And you have to do that because the moment you don't talk about something, the moment you don't put it up anymore is the moment that no longer it values. You become a district that has a mission and vision statement you can't find. Or there's a strategic plan that we had seven years ago. I don't know where it is. You can't do that. So we have to ensure that this becomes lived and that only happens if the staffs at the school site take it seriously and they have. And you know, they celebrate it and they're also working on challenges that have come up from the results. And I want to thank the district office, both the cabinet or, or folks who are working tirelessly to ensure everything from curriculum getting to the school sites to ensure that students are following behaviors at, at all levels, right? All programs, all schools. So there's so much work that needs to be done and I want to thank the board also for your hard work and ensuring that all this took place. So thank you, guys. This is great and we'll open up for questions.
Thank you.
I have a, I just have a comment. I guess I know you're working on, some of them need a whole lot of improvement. But I just wanted to make a comment because I know how, how we have a gem in that dual immersion. It is just a jewel. So I would like that to continue to happen and expand it more because it is a really great program.
Thank you. I wish I had a part in it, but it was at my former school. So I can definitely attest to the program. It's amazing.
I have a, I have a comment or a question. So we should start seeing our scores go up because now we aligned our curriculum with the state testing the CASP and everything. Whereas before they were kind of not aligned and now we're getting them aligned. And so we should start seeing the scores slowly going up.
Yes, and that has been the work that Sonia Oliva has done. And so thank you for that piece. We have worked really hard at also trying to align the interim assessments. And so Sonia has been leading teachers to create interim assessments, looking at the claims and targets of our CASP test. So what is the state asking of our students to do? And how do we offer experiences within the school year? So it's not a big surprise at the end of the year coming into this year, what the scores are because they've had the experiences throughout the school year because of the alignment.
I know it was frustrating before because the kids were doing excellent within the district testing, but then when they got to the state testing, it was, the test scores were really low. So yeah, so now we're.
And the board passed, voted in three curriculums that are more aligned. We both have curriculum for special ed. We have curriculum for newcomers and we have the K6 mathematics curriculum, all which are better curriculums than we had before. So yeah, it should continue. To me, it will continue to show increased results each year. And again, back to the assessments, if you assess something using the wrong tool, well, the game's over already. So having an assessment that was more aligned so that teachers can then actually analyze the results and make changes during the year. I think you heard a comment, you can't do an, you can't save the person during an autopsy, right? It's too late. So we're going to, we've got to make sure to figure out what the problem is during the year before the test is taken. So that's a lot of work that Sonia, the team, everyone and Ed Services has set forth.
Yeah, I just wanted a thanks and really congratulations to especially you and principals and all the teachers making this happens and continues going forward on it. And the board is very happy with these, I'm pretty sure. I am at least. And that was the one of the thing before I got on the board that we want to see our schools do the better without these student achievement scores and, and school is nothing to me anyway. But I'm very glad that we're going in positive directions and I see that metrics, you know, from three to eight through 11 and, and ELA 5.1, math 7.6% or points, you know, increased. And from nine to 10, math was 12.5. Wow, that was pretty good. So something the teachers doing it better or the curriculum, like you said, you know, so something's working out. So only the, the suspension is the one that expulsion and then hopefully that our teams work on it, you know, try to see how can we decrease those, you know, and either, you know, more education out there to the students, you know, and getting better on that.
Yeah. And one thing to say about suspensions, sometimes when you initiate more rules and you have more guidance, sometimes suspensions go up. So for your example, I don't want to see vaping. If I see it, here's the consequence, suspensions go up. So unfortunately, they've gone up. Hopefully we'll see them starting to maintain and, and slowly go down to meet the state's requirements. We know that the state holds us accountable on that. And so I do want to say sometimes it does take a year of really refining your expectations. And I'm hopeful that that'll start maintaining itself so that we don't see an every year increase of percentages of that type year to year. So.
Great. I have a question about, so if we go way back to the beginning of the slideshow, the machine, right? That shows that everything's going in and getting tweaked. What types of things are affecting? Because this is the first of three, the, the mini series, right? So this is the first of three. What types of things are going to affect that final outcome? And then, and if I could, I don't know if this is a related question, but.
Sonia will love to answer that right out.
Well, the things in yellow that the state requires when we don't meet them, what are the repercussions?
So some of the factors, for example, we have what's called a census day. So we, there's a certain number of students that are enrolled in the district at a certain time. And so if students are coming and going throughout the year, there are factors depending on whether or not we include those scores in our, in our data. So what happens is, you know, the, the state takes our numbers and like, okay, this student was either, wasn't enrolled yet or was enrolled yet or came from another school. So there's kind of some enrollment factors that, that are considered whether or not their, their scores count. So that's going to change our overall numbers. Participation rate is another one. If we were below a certain participation rate, then we would be, we would receive penalties. But we were at like 99% participation. So we were, so that won't happen. And I think from past years, what I've noticed is that we actually, the numbers may even go a little higher than what we're showing today. I don't, not going to guess, but just based on past, we're hopeful, yes.
But that's why we can't do too much of an assertion because we have to wait for the state.
Trying to think of some other.
Like a student enters in our district too close to the test time, takes the test. That actually doesn't count for us. That counts for the school they came from. And so there's measures that the, that the state will have to say, whoops, that was not for this school. So there's a little bit of adjustments like that. You might have spoken to some of that already, but those are some example things.
And there's also our, our students that are what we call newcomers. So if they've been in the district left, less than 12 months, they're not required to take the ELA assessment, but their data may be included in these, in this data. So some scores might be removed. They do take the math and the science though, but since they're, you know, brand new to speaking English, then they're not required to take the ELA portion of CASP. So those are the types of things that they, some of the factors that are, when they change those numbers and we get the final results, which I think should be by December 1st at the latest, I believe.
Thank you.
Brayden, anything, any comments? You happy with these results?
I'm very happy with the results.
All right. If there's no question, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. That was the good news. We're going to move into the facilities. Item one, North American Technical Services, DSA in a plant inspection services proposal for Salma High School portable toilets, modular classroom building and a bus stop off. Project fiscal impact 10,200 funding sources bond funds.
Yes, thank you. So this is for North American Technical Services. DSA requires that specific portions of construction and materials used to be evaluated and witnessed by an approved testing laboratories and their special inspectors. So this is for inspector, an inspector to, for the in-plant construction of the modules that will be used for the bus drop-off project.
Great. Are there any questions from the board? If not, may I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
All second.
All favors say aye. Anybody pose? Right, we're moving into item two. The gray bar electrical quotes for electric, electrical panels and a child nutrition walk-in freezer cooler combo. Project fiscal impact is 13,087 funding sources cafeteria fund.
Yes, thank you. This is for a 600 amp electrical panel for the child nutrition walk-in freezer cooler project at Jackson. This is in, as a result of the upgrade in equipment that we did and making that a serving kitchen. And so we just had to upgrade the electrical panel for that. So that's what this is for.
Which school is this for?
I'm sorry?
Which school is it?
Jackson.
Oh, Jackson. Sorry. Okay.
Yes, we're, we're making that a, a serving kitchen. And so the electrical panel has to get upgraded to support the new equipment.
Are there any questions from the board?
No, I make a motion.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'm second.
All right, Mark's second. All favors say aye. Anybody pose? All right, we're going to move into the human resources. Child nutrition funded staffing for Jackson Elementary, 12-month lead food services operator position, positional, position fiscal impact is 48,200 funding sources, child nutrition.
So keeping with the theme of the Jackson kitchen and as the Jackson kitchen is now becoming a cooking kitchen, there is the need to have a 12-month lead food service operator position there. So it's currently an 11-month position. So it's just some additional days for that position. So it's not a whole new position. It's just a modification of a current position. But the cost of the entire position is 48,200. And so this will be someone who will also assist with winter session and summer session of the ELOP program. So it's just to extend their services as Jackson becomes a cooking kitchen.
I'll make the motion.
I have a question.
All right.
So is this the only lead that's a 12-month or all leads 12 months?
There are a few other positions that are, that are 12 months, but not all of them. So this would be a position that, so you have positions, I believe, at the high school and at the middle school that are also 12-month.
Yes, I don't remember like here and Lincoln would have their leads. And a lead is a lead no matter if they're 10 months, 11 months, 12 months.
Correct, but this would be a 12-month position.
So I have a question. So this is a ELOP position being funded from child nutrition?
It will help with the ELOP, but it's for, you know, year round. But so they'll be helping with the ELOP programs with, with the serving of food.
And I thought their child nutrition was picking their.
They are, yes. But they're, they assist with the ELOP programs.
Are there any question? All right, we have a motion from Mark. Is there a second? All right, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All right, nobody pose. We're moving into the resolution FY 25-12 in a matter of assignment out of credential area for 2024, 2025.
So each year we bring forward to you, if we have a teacher that is a credential teacher, but they're teaching outside of their area. So they, we have in for resolution 2512, we have two teachers at the middle school that are teaching social studies that are fully credentialed, multiple subject. They just don't have their full social studies credential. And so we bring forward to you a resolution that we then take to the county to allow them to continue to teach these classes.
Is this a routine thing, pretty routine?
Yes, each year we bring this and we are working very closely with the middle school in looking at their schedule and the credentials and as we continue to look at having fully credentialed teachers in our classes.
And is this something they've been doing and we've, it's been approved in the past?
That is correct. So these teachers have been there for a number of years.
Are these teachers eventually going to get the credential they need so they don't have the exemption or?
So we are looking at with the middle school that the teachers are moving forward to. If they don't have the credentials, we're looking at where they're being placed in the master schedule. And so they are fully credentialed. And so some of them are, they've taken enough coursework to get those, this waiver.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I make a motion, we accept.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? Our motion carries. Moving into item three, resolution FY 25-13. In the matter of alignments out of credential area 2024, 25.
So in the first resolution, that's we're dealing with two teachers that were doing social studies. This other one is a teacher that is, it's for one teacher in this resolution who is teaching outside of their subject matter. Teacher has a multiple subject credential, but is doing classes such as leadership, yearbook and a block class. They've been doing that for a number of years and this again is just an annual approval of the resolution.
I make a motion to approve.
One second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're going to move into the business services. Presentation 2324 unedited actual report. Jessica.
Right. Good evening. Tonight I will be going over our 202324 unaudited actuels. We'll look at the 2324 unaudited, unaudited actuels and then also look at our 2425 updated budget. And then kind of go over our reporting cycle and then open it up for questions. So what is the unaudited actuels? The unaudited actuels financial report represents the financial position and results of operations of the school district for the fiscal year 202324. So it's essentially closing out the books. This is the one time we know exactly how we did. And it's no longer a projection and these are our actuels. The reason why it's unaudited actuels is because the auditor, once we complete this, there's still some steps that an auditor has to review Fresno County Office of Ed and the state have to review as well. So we have to submit the certification form and official, what they call a DAT file, which is all the extraction of all of the data that we have from our state software. The GAN resolution will also be included and then the, the CEA waiver, two of which you'll see in the next two items. Our due dates are September 15th. This is where we'll turn it into Fresno County Office of Ed and they'll review our information. And then they submit it to the state by October 15th, 2024. And then they submit it to the state by October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. So for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Here is a summary of what you have in your packet, the hundred and six-page packet that you have on this. So this is a quick summary. It's broken up into two columns, unrestricted, which is our, the majority of our operational budget. And then restricted, those are all the programs that have specific uses for the funds that. And are, as the name suggests, restricted to just those. And then you have the total column that combines them both. So. We have here for the unrestricted side eighty-five million dollars in expenditures. And then on the restricted side, we have fifty-six million dollars in expenditures, a total of a hundred and forty-one million dollars in expenditures. So here, the, the moment we've all been waiting for, right? Is kind of explains just the, the, how we did. And so I stripped out all of the specifics and left the beginning balance. The total funds available, total expenditures, and then highlighted the transfers. That transfers out is a million dollars for our facilities. So that's for any projects that we might have, which we all know we have plenty of. That is some dollars that are, that was approved, board approved by you guys last year, I believe. That if we met our ten percent reserve, we could contribute more to our facility project. So that transfer is there. And then we also have two assignments. Assignments are set-asides, if you will. They're not really committed. If we commit them, it would have to be board-approved. So this, these are two set-asides that are in here. One is the LCAP carryover. Because LCAP is technically unrestricted in terms of its resource. But we all know that LCAP is very much restricted and there's a plan that goes along with it that says this is how we have to spend the dollars. It's best to kind of remove that from our ending fund balance so that we don't count that as part of our reserve. Because that's, there's already a plan for those dollars. And the next item that's, that is an assignment is a set aside for the twenty-five, twenty-six negotiated salary increase. If you recall, we settled for the twenty-five, twenty-six year of four point fifteen percent. And so this is a set aside to contribute to that at, when we get to that point. Taking those assignments out and the transfers out, we have a reserve amount of fourteen million, fourteen point five million dollars. Which gives us a ten point zero nine percent reserve for the twenty-three, twenty-four unaudited actuals. No applause, no? All right, for twenty. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, this is the updated budget. So the unaudited actuals not only look at the twenty-three, twenty-four year. But they also look ahead, or not ahead, but to the current in twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And this is the, the first update you've seen since we adopted it back in June. So same concept, it breaks it up in unrestricted and restricted. Unrestricted is our operational budget and so we tend to just kind of focus there. And so our total expenditures for unrestricted is ninety-five million. And for restricted is forty-nine point three million, for a total of a hundred and forty-four point six million dollars. This was kind of tricky because as we've mentioned in previous presentations, things don't always line up with the fiscal years. And so for example, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had. Negotiated late, so the twenty-two, twenty-three. Settlement for salaries and benefits is reflected in the twenty-three, twenty-four year. And then similarly in twenty-four, twenty-five, we did have some CSCA settled. Late and so that's also reflected in our twenty-four, twenty-five. So it did skew it a little bit, makes it a little harder to do some projections. But that does skew the numbers a little when you're comparing them side by side.
So twenty-four, twenty-five, we're gonna decrease our revenue by fourteen million? Is, is, is that just projection? I mean, compared to the last year's twenty-three, twenty-four? I see him.
What was it? I'm sorry?
The decrease on the revenue by fourteen million, right, one twenty-seven, one hundred twenty-seven million, right? So this year twenty-three and twenty-four, you have like.
Oh, I see, I get you. Yes, so revenues for unaudited actuals was a hundred and forty-eight million dollars. And then, yeah, so for one, for twenty-four, twenty-five revenues are a hundred and twenty-seven million. So the other thing that we are seeing here is that the ESSER dollars, which are the COVID dollars are no longer. They've been exhausted, so that is not reflected in our twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So there's some changes like that that are happening that we're starting to see the impact on.
Thanks for clarification.
So the reporting cycle, just to give you a reminder, you're gonna see more of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And more detail in the first interim report. That'll be, I'll bring that to you in December. That reporting cycle is July one through October thirty-first. And we will bring, we will dive in on the expenditures by category, just like we did tonight. But we'll also include a multi-year projection, which looks at the twenty-four, twenty-five and the two out-years. And we'll look at what the projected reserve percentages are in the two out-years as well. Also in December, we'll have our district audit and that, we'll bring that to you as well. Second interim board report will, is due in March and that reporting period is July one through January thirty-first. So you'll have a couple of more opportunities. These are all projections. As I mentioned before, unaudited actuals is the only time we actually know how we did. The rest of the year, we're, we're projecting and we're estimating and we're monitoring and that kind of thing. So we'll bring those projections to you a couple of times in the next couple of months. Are there any questions?
I have some question. So let's look at page one. I'm just curious because I know we took a class on this, but I'm just. So if you look at expenditures, certificated salaries, if you go all the way to the right and it's the difference is minus. Eight point two percent. What does that mean?
So that means that our. Certificated salaries went down by eight point two percent. And so that's kind of what I was alluding to in the presentation. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we had the, the settlement from twenty-two, twenty-three. So you're gonna see a drop in salaries in twenty-four, twenty-five, but then you're also gonna see an increase. Because of the late settlement of CSCA. So you're gonna, you would think naturally you would just see an increase, but because we had such a substantial. Retro in twenty-three, twenty-four, it's a reduction.
So that's the same thing as C, excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures before other financing sources and uses. So if you go to the right, it's minus three hundred and thirty-eight percent.
So thank you for pointing that out. I, I did not mention that. So in twenty-four, twenty, so in twenty-three, twenty-four. Again, it is what it is. Those are our actuals. Those are what we actually spent. In twenty-four, twenty-five, that's a projection. We assume that every dollar we have, we're gonna spend. And so in twenty-four, twenty-five, that also includes the carryover from the year prior. I think we've talked about that before, where in the year prior, we get the, the funding for that, but the expenditures don't always hit in the same year. So we have to carry those over to the twenty-four, twenty-five year. And so we have approximately twenty million or twenty. Yeah, twenty million and carryover for, from the prior year. And so that's also included in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. So you'll, we'll most likely see at our neck, at our next time in September, the unaudited actuals. It'll be significantly lower because we won't spend every dollar. It's just the way it goes.
Okay, so that's, that includes E, net increase, decrease in fund balance, which is a negative three eighty-five? Oh, did I already say that one? No, I didn't.
No, you didn't. That one is the net in, or decreased. So what that means is that we dip into our reserves for that. And then that is still reflected in the reserve percentages that I presented tonight. So that's, we're, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. For twenty-four, twenty-five, with that in mind, we're still showing a ten point zero five percent reserve. So even with, and also in twenty-four, twenty-five, we did an assignment of one point eight million dollars. And that was also for the twenty-five, twenty-six negotiated salary. If you look on page two. Under section D, where it says assigned. You'll see that one point eight was also set aside for the twenty-five, twenty-six salary. And even accounting for that, we are at a ten point zero five projected reserve for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, so on page two, we're also talking about the ending balance, June thirtieth is a negative forty-four point six. What does that mean? Restricted is a negative seventy-three point nine.
I'm sorry, which line did you?
I'm on page two and I'm on the left-hand side, it says number two, item two, ending balance, June thirtieth. If you go all the way across it's. Minus negative forty-four point six, I believe. And then if you go restricted, it's a negative seventy-three point nine. And then assigned, other assignments are negative seventy point three.
Yeah, so again, yeah, these columns are, you're, you're totally fine. These columns are just showing you the variances between twenty-three, twenty-four. And twenty-four, twenty-five. So all of the expenditures have been tightened to reflect what they actually are. And then in twenty-four, twenty-five, it's looking at what we have budgeted, what we're, and we assume we're gonna spend every dollar. But as the unaudited actuals show, we won't spend everything because not everything is completed nicely by June thirtieth. We oftentimes see things completed or expenditures hit after the fiscal year closes.
So we don't have any monies out there that are unassigned, do we? Cause every little dollar that we have extra, we should be assigning it to something?
Yes, so all, all of the above categories, certificated salaries classified, if you will, those are essentially assigned. They are budgeted for those categories. The items that are not assigned are what I had to manually assign. Which is the LCAP carryover in twenty-three, twenty-four and then the negotiated salaries in twenty-four, twenty-five. That is. Below the line, meaning that it's not physically budgeted anywhere. We're just earmarking those dollars for that. And then if you look and letter E, unassigned, unappropriated, it says reserve for economic uncertainties. That's where you'll see the dollar amounts of what we have set aside for reserve. And below that, it shows unassigned is zero. So to your point, everything is accounted for. Everything's assigned.
So when you personally assign them, are they just a holding place?
Yes, yes, because it's not gonna happen until twenty-five, twenty-six. And so we're setting it aside. I know that's something that we're nervous about, is making sure that we have enough funding for the increase in salaries. That we're gonna see in twenty-five, twenty-six. So we did set that aside. We still met our ten percent reserve. And the other thing that we're doing and working hard towards is gonna increase our revenue in twenty-five, well, in the future years, twenty-five, twenty-six. To help with the increase in salaries is. Our unduplicated counts, where there's some work being done on Saturday school, school to recoup ADA. So that ADA is gonna improve as well. And so those are other, also the COLA, whatever that may be in that year. Those three items are not accounted for and we've already set enough aside for the negotiated salaries in twenty-five, twenty-six.
So if we don't have any, if we don't have enough money to cover those salaries, are we gonna try to pull those from other?
So right now, so just to give you some, a perspective, in twenty-three, twenty-four, the settle, the settlement salaries was five percent. That was a little bit under four million, four million. It was three point six million dollars. That was the cost of that. So between twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five, we have assigned three point one million dollars. So that's almost, I mean, and obviously it's gonna be more, cause step in column by the time we get to twenty-five, twenty-six. But we have the majority earmarked for the salary increase already and that's not including the COLA that we'll get. The increase in our ADA and the increase in our unduplicated counts. So we're, we're good standing right now.
In short, the, the budgeting that we have right now that you're showing us are based on figures that are more conservative than they are actual.
Yeah.
All right, is there any other questions from the board? This is not action item, right? This is just discussion or is it action item?
It's an action item.
So where are we taking the action? Do you just approve it the way it is or?
Approving the way it is.
Approving it and then again, it'll be submitted to Fresno County Office of Ed and they review it. So they'll double-check my work and then they'll also send it to the state who will then double-check our work and then our auditors will also double-check our work. Plenty of oversight.
If the county finds something, do they get back to you immediately or whatever?
Yes, but also the auditors, if they find something, they will have us do some correcting entries. And then that'll be our final budget, so.
May I have a motion for this item?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? Motion carries. We're moving into resolution FY twenty-five dash one-four. To establish the twenty-three, twenty-four GAN limit. Jessica.
Yes, thank you. This is a fun one. So this is a standard item that we have to do every year. This is to establish the twenty-three, twenty-four GAN limit. This is a part of the unaudited actuals. And so just an FYI, the GAN limit is named after Paul GAN.
In what year?
Oh gosh, in, oh, I don't, oh, I do have it. All right, so what this is essentially is a calculation. This is a, this is a, what we have to report to the state. The GAN limit places a cap on growth government spending. And so they would just wanna make sure that our expenditures cannot grow faster than the rate of inflation. So we just give them the data and the state collects it and it's something that they use for their calculation. So it's, it doesn't impact us per se at the district level. It's just data that's collected for the state.
All right, is there any questions from the board?
I make a motion to approve.
I have a second. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, anybody pose? All right, moving into item three. Placeholder twenty-three, twenty-four exemption from the required expenditure for classroom compensation.
Yes, thank you. So existing law requires that each school district spend a minimum percentage of their expenditures on classroom compensation. As a unified school district, we're required to spend fifty-five percent on instruction and in the classroom. So we are here tonight to do a waiver for CEA because unfortunately, our percentage is at fifty-one point sixty-eight. So that is below the requirement. And the reason for this is some of the, obviously the expenditures that don't tie to instruction would be HVAC. Food nutritional, you know, anything related to food. Any non-instructional expenditure is taken out. And so if you recall in the twenty-three, twenty-four, we did have some HVAC projects that. Were removed and so it just reduced our percentage towards instructional. Expenditures. Also our, our COVID dollars. A lot of that, those monies that came in were specific for, or, you know, filters and all these other expenditures. That again are not tied to instruction, so that kind of skewed it as well. And so we're just gonna submit for a waiver. As we have in the last couple of years for this.
And when we do this, what, what do we do about it?
I'm sorry?
What do we do about it if, once we do?
So it's a waiver. It's just basically acknowledging we haven't met it and then we, we apply for a waiver to the county. They approve it. And then it's something that we monitor throughout the year. And so there's a couple of reasons, like I said, projects or maintenance items that can skew our percentage. Also even just using the wrong coding. If we're not educating everyone that uses budget codes and they don't assign it as instruction. And they assign it as administration, for example, that could, again, it's only as good as the data that gets put in. So those are things that I'm, I'm also monitoring.
Okay. So the reason that we're filing an exemption is because of the HVAC?
That's a big, a big component of this.
What else?
So things that are, that don't account is food services. Administrative things like, you know, non-agency goals. Fringe benefits for retired persons, those facilities and acquisition and construction, all of those expenditures. Obviously do not apply.
Okay, so some of the considerations are. Salary schedule. Is that part of it?
Yeah, so the, as part of the waiver, we have to compare our salaries.
So the district classroom teacher salary is already in excess of other comparable school district classroom teacher's salary. Is that part of it?
Yes, so we have to submit, we have to do comparables to the districts in our area. We show how much their salary schedules are, what our salary schedules are. So they're thoroughly making us prove that we are, you know, in. Line with the salaries in our areas, that we are trying to meet our instructional requirements. It's just that. That we are trying to meet our instructional requirements. It's just that they're being skewed right now because of some of the projects we have.
So are you saying that other school districts are paying their, their teaching salary are, are lower?
No, it's just a, it's a, a something that we're proving that we're in line. We're, we're not like, what they're wanting to see is if we're, if we weren't meeting our requirement of fifty five percent and our salaries were really low, they would say you guys are not in uh comparable to your surrounding districts. And that's an area that you could improve on to meet the cap.
But we are comparable, in fact, we're over comparable.
Yeah, we're, we're comparable.
Over, we're over.
So if I understand this correctly, what this means is that for every dollar spent in the elementary school district, for instance, it says we should have sixty cents of every dollar going for instruction. Or in the high school districts, fifty cents of every dollar going for instruction. That's what the state says we should have.
Yes, that's correct.
And so we're doing a waiver because we're like thin line clothes.
Yes.
That we might actually be underneath it, we might be a little bit over, but we're just playing the safe bet, we're hedging our bets. Um, because the state mandates that we have to do this much going to instruction.
Yes, that's correct.
And when we do like the stepping pieces and stuff like that, that helps us push that, that we're hitting those numbers that we need to.
Yes, exactly right.
What happens if we don't hit those numbers, if we're too low for too long?
Um, I actually have not seen the repercussions on that. I don't ever wanna see that. Um, but it is something that the county does monitor, and this is why we have to bring it to the board and bring it to your attention. And then get the approval and so um I can get back to you on that. I can reach out to the county and see what, if they've ever seen anyone not meet it for too long.
So because from, from my point of view, it's, it's like, I understand the logic behind this, cause at least in my opinion, it looks like what they're trying to say is we're giving you money to have kids come here.
Exactly.
If you're spending only forty percent on their instruction, what's the rest of it going to?
Exactly, exactly.
I, I can see where they're getting at, so I understand the waiver.
To answer one of the questions too, and like one of the majority of the monies that go to, I know uh you had mentioned salaries. Actually, the biggest one is projects for us is where um the money goes to more. So if you look at our year to year project costs or um definitely for the size of our district, well, and we've known this already. Um, and it's, and it's okay, that's why you get the waiver and districts do that, so it's not a bad thing to spend. The kinda money we're spending on projects and it's fine, but we do have to be watchful of that and ensure that we try to get close to it as possible.
I wanna clarify something. So when you're talking about the county, they're looking that we're not under, not necessarily over.
Right, they're, they're making sure that e- even though we haven't met it, met it, that we're still, that it's justifiable reasons why we haven't met it. That it's not going to administration or something like that, that our, our salaries are still in line with providing a, a good instructional program. Though that's what they're just making sure that because there are times like projects that can bring us down below it. And that's a justifiable expense if, if we're still uh maintaining our classroom uh expenditures. And also with the, all the COVID and the one-time dollars, a lot of districts haven't been able to meet this uh minimum requirement. That, that's, that had, there's been an uptick in that since that as well.
Well, the COVID dollars really shouldn't be uh calculated in it because those were, that's money that we should.
It was temporary.
Yeah, that was just temporary money.
It's still, uh, they just look at our expenditures, so if we spent, if the COVID dollars allowed us to do filters and masks or whatever it was. Um, those expenditures were still um happened and we still have to count for them and they still look at them.
Okay. I make a motion to approve if nobody else has any questions.
I'll second it.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody post? All right, we're moving into resolution um FY twenty five dash zero nine in the matter of authorizing signatures on the ALMS ASB account.
Yes, the two item, the two next items are, are standard. It's just to add the principals as the authorized signer in the ASB accounts at Abraham Lincoln and Garfield Elementary.
Are there any questions from the board?
I make a motion to approve uh resolution FY twenty five oh nine and FY twenty five ten.
Is there a question, Laura? Okay, do you second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody post? All right, moving to five, resolution uh FY twenty five dash one zero. In the matter of authorized signatures on the Garfield Elementary School ASB account.
That one, are you ready?
Oh, you need to vote.
Sorry.
All right, so we've amended, so we proved both. All right, we're gonna move into considered agenda. Item listed under the considered agendas are considered to be routine and are acted on the Board of Trustee in one motion. There is no discussion of these items before the board unless the member of the board staff and a public request a specific item be discussed and are removed from the considered agenda. It is understood that the administration recommending approval on all consent agenda items. Each item on the considered agenda is approved by the member of the governing board shall be deemed to have considered in a full and adopted as recommended. Is there any item need to be discussion?
I just have a quick question on contract services summary, educational services.
So we will uh pull that item out and uh we will vote on the left of the.
I just have a question, I'm not gonna pull it. Um, uh, the.
You have to pull it. I don't think you can discuss it without pulling it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll pull it and um are we, can we vote on the rest of the items? Is there a motion to it? Is there a motion on the considered item?
You made a motion?
Is there a second? All right, all favors say aye. All right, all right, any opposed? All right, um, Mr. Gomes, you wanna discuss on that item?
Rosemary had that one, or did we have all?
Yeah, that's what we did.
No, we didn't pull it?
I said, I just had a, yeah, the question is um, we're still using leadership associates?
Yeah, so the leadership associate will still be doing my evaluation. One will still be working with me and you also see uh support for uh HR that uh leadership associates will be doing a training also here. Uh, to have uh Wayne will be a part of the training with leadership associates also.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I put it on one of the weeklies, actually, if you, I think they asked me about it, where I talked about some of the training that we'll have for HR and some other places.
All right, so we're gonna move into the board report.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, is this, all right, all favors say aye. Anybody post? All right, so we're gonna move into the board reports. We will start with Mr. Fardor.
What? How's that work? I wasn't ready, man. First of all, welcome back, Nick.
Uh, thank you.
Look forward to hearing about your, your trip. We uh, open houses are almost done, right?
Heartland, seventeenth of October.
Right, saving the, the best for last, or right?
Yeah.
So open houses are, are about done, that's been fun. Um, I do like what I'm seeing uh with our strategic plan and those scores going up. And I do wanna just say thank you to all the staff who has worked so very hard for that. It is seen, it is appreciated. Um, most of all though, thank you to the students. You guys have done the work. Um, and to the parents, to the parents who have supported these students. So it truly is a team effort and uh go team. What I got?
Awesome, thank you. Mrs. Kessler?
Well, um, I don't have much, but um I wanted to start off by thanking Rose and whoever helped me today in my convalescence. Because it's been a chore, hopefully it won't last long, but I, I appreciate the help. And um I just, I don't know if any of you knew, but I was a delegate to the DNC, the Democratic National Convention. And that was exciting. Came back and had surgery. And um, and that's about it, other than I wanted to take a one quick moment to talk about my friend Margie Salinas. Who was a dear friend of mine, worked with her at uh Roosevelt. Uh, as a classified employee she was, and then she became a certificated employee. She was wonderful, wonderful person. A wonderful daughter, wife, and mother, grandmother, and a wonderful friend. I just wanted to say a little tribute to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Yes, I um enjoyed the open houses immensely. Um, everybody's doing a great job. I just do have a couple of questions. Um, do we have air conditioning in the boys locker room?
Uh, boys locker room, Lane? It's high school?
Um, are we gonna get uh air conditioners in there?
That could be a decision of going through our bonds committee and having conversation.
It was included with all the HVAC going on.
We can note it and then take it into them.
Huh?
We can note it and then take it into our committee.
Okay, and then um, are we having track meets?
Oh, and real quick, on the locker room, if you guys recall, uh, we're gonna pretty soon start talking about redoing all the locker rooms, so it's probably it's probably gonna have an HVAC, so actually let me hold off on it. So give a full completed locker room system.
And then are we, are we having track meets?
Track meets were towards the end of the year, last season, right? In spring season.
Maybe, cross country, maybe, I don't know, if they do that in the fall.
Okay.
You know?
And then um, band, does band have all the instruments that they need?
Yeah, last I was talking with uh our band teacher, he had mentioned has everything. I always go to him and say, what do you need? And um, I don't know if he's here today, he was outside doing his marches for like six hours again. Probably out there, but yeah, he said, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Well, um, I kinda have to, to refer back to what Sarah was talking about. I worked with Margie for a while back in the, long, 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 long time ago. She never aged. Um, she was a great person to work with. And I don't have a whole lot to talk about this week. Uh, everything's been a blur for me for the past few weeks. But I do know that everything seems to be going in the right direction. The report we got shows that we're getting there. Uh, the actual are a little scary on the budget side, but we'll be okay. I know a lot of it has to do with, we don't know what the state's going to do, but we were planning for the worst anyway. So uh, you know, we're looking forward, or at least I'm looking forward. We got good leadership, we got good students. We have a good board. Uh, I think we're gonna be okay. Of course, you know, it's always gonna be a little scary, but we'll get through it.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, from me, I take a little vacation, I guess, it's family weddings to Scotland. And Jeremy, it was one week, it was nice, cool, um raining every day, green. So it was nice, a little break, but uh I have to come back. Gotta pay the bills, so uh other than that, I gotta congratulate you to those all students participated in the summer V R O P. And you guys are doing awesome and uh thanks for those reports, looking good. Making our life easier, making our board looking good, that our scores are going up. Hopefully we see it in November, the state goes up. And uh we makes proud of all the principals and everybody who I salute them, so that's it from me.
Great. Okay.
Yes, super generous board.
All right, so we're now in our fifth week of school and things are off, to a really strong start. Uh, to provide an update of how we're doing at the start of the year, I'm gonna have uh Principal Lane come up here. And share some insights into how our students and staff are settling in, highlights of our first few weeks and other things he wants to talk about.
Boy, thank you. Uh, good evening, board, and all of those still here in attendance. So uh Raquel told me to keep it at three minutes or less, which I understand, and in fairness to her, it's probably a really good idea. So we'll go ahead and start at the very beginning, um, and then move through it quickly. So registration this year, we decided to do it differently. Freshmen got their own orientation day. And with that, we had a rally for all freshmen in the gym. That was performed by our link crew, which is a um, it's made up of juniors and seniors designed to connect with our freshmen. So we did it differently this year, commit a whole day to them. They went on campus tours and then they came through and went through registration. Then we went on to sophomores, juniors, and seniors. We had a few raffles, then we included food trucks and things of that nature to make it a little bit more fun, a little bit more involved, make you feel connected um, to the school. The first day of school, and Brayton, I think you were there, were you there in the gym? First day of school there at five fifteen AM?
No, I wasn't.
You didn't make it? But you heard about it?
Not at link crew, no.
Oh man, we could've used you. So um first day of school, we had two news stations came out. And we had uh cheer was here, link crew, some leadership members at five fifteen AM, as well as the band. Uh, they met in the gym, did a little bit of a, kinda like a pep rally feel, and then they did a few interviews and then showed um, some different things that we've done here at the school in, in terms of signage and, and some school branding. Uh, something we talked about there, that his enthusiasm is contagious and positive energy is free. And it's something that we talk about and try to exemplify here at Selma High School on a regular basis. So we, we got our sports report, we have football, volleyball, water polo, cross country, and tennis all going. They've all gotten off to a strong start. Uh, football has as many wins in the first three weeks as we've had the last two years combined. So we're going in a good, a really good direction, and I like the energy uh that we've got going out there. Uh, we also mentioned we had over twenty five clubs now. We have, that's a addition of about five new clubs. Um, we had a student came and, and, and she came to see me and wants to do a mock trial club. This summer, she had the opportunity to go down to UCLA and be part of a mock trial um kinda program, and she wants to institute that here. So we're looking for an advisor uh to make that happen. Couple other things, we started um caused positive referrals. I know when I was in school, we had, when you got a referral was not so good. And so now we have positive referrals and what those are, when we have a student that exemplifies one of our core four, which is uh work ethic, perseverance, integrity, or accountability. Uh, the teacher sends that to me, then I'll call the student in, talk to them about that. They get a little um certificate that they can get a free ice cream for, and then I'll contact the parents. And we also started bear bucks, which is the same idea, when you do something um good, noteworthy, teacher will give that to you, and then you can go and get something at our student store. And we surveyed, surveyed students, hey, what is it that you would like? Right, cause if we go by what we're thinking, it may not be appealing to our students, which would kinda defeat the purpose. Um, kinda last couple of things, we want staff, students, and parents, and everyone that comes onto campus here at Selma High School to feel really comfortable and to feel welcomed, and that's something that we put a lot of time and energy into. I get five to ten student emails a day um for a, a wide variety of topics, and they really know how to advocate for themselves. Um, which is something that, that we want them to learn. And then uh the campus right now has a really unified feel to it. I feel like we're all pulling on the rope in the same uh direction. Uh, and also our relationship with Heartland, uh, I don't think it's ever been better. Today, Mr. Farley, the new principal came over, we spent an hour together, we walked seven to eight classrooms. Teachers were really welcoming, uh went to some CTE opportunities and so forth. Just call them, that's our, that's our extended Heartland family, our students go back and forth, and so uh we're making sure that, that we keep that relationship uh really strong. And then lastly, on October twenty fifth, I'm gonna email all of our elementary principals, we're gonna have a sixth grade rally. We did this last year, we did a sixth grade parade and I got some feedback like, hey, that was great, but it would've been nice if they could've been part of the rally. It's hard to intermix sixth graders and ninth through twelfth graders at a rally. So I talked to our ASB um teacher, Mrs. Garcia, and she said, let's just do a rally for sixth graders, just for them. So on October twenty fifth, um, we're gonna look to do that here in the morning. I'll make sure I notify all of you if you're free. And we're gonna do a full rally, ASB will be in there, uh band will be in there, cheer, and we'll do a, a rally just like we did for the high school students. I did have a couple of students ask me about confetti. Confetti seems to be something they're interested in, so I think we're gonna, I know, I felt the same way. I could feel Randy talking like, no, Nate, it'll be too hard to clean up, but we're gonna do it anyways. Um, this Thursday, home water polo and volleyball, if you get a chance. Uh, and then Friday, we host Dinuba, uh who will be a very formidable opponent, but uh I like our chances, so. That's what we got going on at Selma High School. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was a good update.
Now, uh, I have more to say, but after what, I, so I, I'm gonna deflate it a bit. Uh, the, the positivity contagious piece is uh gonna drop a little bit. Anyhow, it's uh, I'm gonna try to be a little bit more like Mr. Lane here, September's attendance awareness month. I'm just gonna say it really loud, maybe. Yeah, uh, and it's time to emphasize the critical role in consistent attendance place in student success. One example of this is happening at our schools, our community liaisons are organizing various attendance awareness weeks at their schools, including lunchtime activities and family engagement efforts that are happening here this week. I'm excited to share that California Department of Food and Agriculture has selected Selma Unified School District to receive two hundred thousand grant monies. Um, for Selma High's Farm to Fork Project. This grant will allow us to further support and expand our farm to fork calibration with our district's child nutrition team. And finally, next week, September eighteenth, Selma High will be hosting its annual college and career fair. This event provides an opportunity for students to explore a variety of pathways after high school with representatives from colleges, universities, trade schools, and local employers in our attendance. We encourage all uh students to attend, and that's it.
Wow, that's great. All right, if we're gonna have adjourned this meeting, is there a motion for adjourned this?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
I second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great week and uh thank you.